Good evening, uh, the, uh, call me the order of seven oh three, we'll call by the clerk please.
Carrie McGee.
Yeah.
Greg Robinson, and.
Here.
Deb Bacon.
Here.
Gary Cody.
Here.
Ian Dixon.
Here.
Nicholas Coram.
Here.
And Ed Wazika is absent.
Wherever you please stand, and who would you have here for the question?
I, for the United States of America, and to the public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all those who wish to remain standing, implication, Lord, as we gather today at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst, help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you, help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a responsible way, and be willing to give up having our own way. God, let this meeting be productive, and it should be in all areas of our lives, help us keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us, amen. Councilor, if you would give the bridge to evacuation plan.
Please, we're ready to see the collection, and we're ready for your right of left to take out that.
Okay, next item is President's comments, I just want to wish everybody, uh, day away, but happy Veterans Day, I want to thank all the veterans that allowed us to sit here and have this exact meeting and enjoy the freedoms that we have, so, uh, I know I enjoyed Veterans Day yesterday, and I hope everybody else did. So that's, uh, we are also working, as you know, budget season's coming up real quick, and, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna try to make it as harmless as we can, we're, we're, hopefully, we can make it good, but I encourage everybody to come to the budget hearings as we go along, and probably January, I think, we're gonna start having meetings, so, please, have all taxpayers, everybody know, come to the meetings and give us just suggestions, and we're working hard, it's not gonna be easy, but we're prepared to do what we can do to make it as harmless as possible. Okay, that being said, that's all, I have the President's comments, uh, I guess the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the council minutes for October twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, any concerns, I am abstaining from this vote, okay?
Um, Mr. President, on page eleven, uh, when there is, um, the section called the first reading for discussion and our action, um, it was an introduction, first reading of the amendment to the Coventry Code, chapter two oh four, solid waste ordinance, uh, it does not mention that, um, at the end of the discussion, you asked that the, uh, council members not asking any questions at that particular time, and I would like that to be recorded, that we did not ask questions, only because you respectfully asked us not to ask questions, not that, not that we didn't have questions.
Yeah, no problem, it's gonna come up again, it'll be your last question, you can add that to it, it's not a problem.
I'm gonna ask the clerk to please add that.
Okay, thank you, any other, any other concern?
I have a couple of, uh, minor corrections, and I'll talk to you later about them, thank you.
Okay, great, so we have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, or opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda will be A four, monthly financial report, by Director John on that, good evening, John.
Good evening. Uh, apologies on my voice, I've been a little under the weather this entire weekend, so I apologize for this, but, make this a little bit quicker as well, just in case, uh, previous, uh, report styles, same thing that we do every two a month, um, again, we're looking at what we're looking at this time, because we've done one quarter, uh, awesome, thank you so much.
Mr. President, we don't have a copy of your report.
All right, sure.
It's okay.
Um, it wasn't including the.
No, it wasn't.
So just give us a little more detail, thank you.
I can, I can zip in this around a little bit.
Would you a little bit, so we can see it, that'd be great. That's good, I think everybody else can see it also, thank you. Can you see it?
All right, so we're looking at twenty, this is one quarter, so we're looking at twenty-five percent when it comes to the budget expenditures for the year, um, overall, we're doing really well when it comes to the collection rates, um, again, what I changed over, when it came to a target rate versus to the overall levy, so this is looking at a target collection rate. Nothing extremely out of the ordinary, except again, from the real estate for prior year, like, you're still moving back. This is even got, um, year over year, so, nothing in particular that stands out right here, some of these might disarm against smaller places like town managers, private management, we all are aware of the situation when it comes to the town manager, might have, uh, salaries, so they're gonna be, until that position is filled, that will be lower. Pretty much in line here, probably where it's expenditures, it's a very small budget, uh, overall, so, there's nothing coming up in that area, all of those are in line with your expectation at this point. Um, overall, at least the parking expenditure, we're at twenty-six percent, so we're right there at the twenty-five percent, um, again, they did have, as, as we recall from last budget, that they did have, uh, a higher than expected, um, overtime, that, that drove the costs up a little bit, but overall, it's. Overall, for the public works, the engineering is up, it is up a little bit, so again, around the twenty-five percent, so, probably to expect for the public works department, uh, overall, they're doing well, it's gonna be interesting to see what happens this year, with, considering we're already seeing flurry and ice, so it's gonna be interesting to see what happens to this winter season, uh, so we're already gonna start seeing that little blip right there when it comes to, um, snow removal. Planning zone, this was a good question last time, it was up higher at the thirty-one percent, I looked, dove into it a little bit more, this is in relation to, uh, I'll, I'll phrase it as the payout that had a, um, to the wages from the previous director, so that had, it was a driver in that cost, but over the time, that you'll actually see that thirty-one percent will slowly fall below and actually be fine, through, actually become under budget, um, by the end of this year. So that's, it was just a lump sum that we had to pay out for that line of budget for, but it should actually, by the end of this year, be, um, under budget. Uh, recreation department is, is at twenty-nine percent, delve into this one, too, uh, the temporary line items for employees was about halfway expended, which is directly related to the temporary employees for all the camps and things like that, so that was the driver in that cost, and I did have the Department of, um, Carson Rex confirm that as well, so, now is the driver there, but definitely we'll be looking at that to make sure that that cost stays there, so the temporary employees, so, oh, it might have, it'll kick off again, probably in the spring, some late spring timeframe, but, uh, that's where, that was the driver there. So again, the audit is going on, uh, there's a lot going on with the audit right now, we have, uh, the last minute, last minute attention pieces that are going out, we have some pieces coming in, they're coming in again on Friday, um, so, we're looking on municipal side, uh, the school as well, we're looking, like, we might be able to make it still on time, it's, it's looking good, we're actually in my current position that they've been saying in years past, so we're still looking at finishing on time. Budget process, as you mentioned earlier, we're starting it already, we've already been in communication with all department heads about getting ready for this budget season, putting together, getting everything ready to go for that, so, been through this once before with Coventry, so, I've already, I've already been looking at those numbers, trying to see what we can do better this year, and, uh, try to get the word out this year, a little bit better on our side as well. Uh, financial system or fee process, uh, so this one is, is interesting in the fact that some information came to light, we're just reopening up the bid to open up for, um, uh, a, a more, uh, opportunity for the previous bidders, but then all the bidders that could possibly come in, just because we found out that will be an extremely significant savings, um, to the taxpayer, something to about half a million dollars, so, I've been fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer, I found that it would just be, uh, prudent for us all to not, to ensure that we pursue that legally, and make sure that it just got opened up again, so, no, no change to the timeline when it comes to implement, implementation, no change in the, in the timeline when it gets changed over to the next financial year, so we're just making sure that we give the best opportunity for the lowest bid for the best outcome, so that's really where we are right there in that process. So, rate study, uh, the model overview just came in the other day, it's really, it was really great, up in a great model, it'll be brought up to the council for a review later, and then be, again, right in line with what was presented, it'll be presented to the taxpayer in the December meeting, so, everything is online with that, and it's, it was really an interesting thing, so they did a wonderful, wonderful job, explains everything, is a really great tool that will be provided for, um, the oversight, that's all, so, that would be it for this, so, our real estate, uh, revenues are adequate, but other forms of income are strong, and expenses by department are still acceptable at this point, do I have any questions?
Okay, John, thank you very much, I just would ask that if any council members request a copy of that, to make sure that you.
Absolutely.
I mean, I personally have seen it, you know, and if I have any questions, I'll, I'll get it all to myself, but, um, for some reason, it wasn't put in our package, but you always give a good thorough report, so I appreciate that, and any questions from the council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, I would like a copy also.
Absolutely, I have to make sure that it gets sent out to all, all of the council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I always ask every, every meeting, contingency fund.
Yes, I will make sure that the contingency fund, I, I don't believe that has even been touched this year at all.
Okay, so you'll be able to include that.
Sure, and I will show that, i- if there is an expenditure that hit the contingency fund, I will have a response as to why, but, uh, from the top of my head, I can't think of any expense that was hit the contingency fund this year.
Okay, and what do you, you know, the upcoming budget, I know the three-year budget forecasting process, that, that was required November first, that goes to the school committee, and the school committee sends it over to the town council, did the, did that get sent over?
Yes, we sent that back and forth between us, there, we did project him, it was, um, extremely high level, just due to doing basic assumptions, holding a lot of things constant, uh, this time, and yes, we did do that.
Okay, so, but will the council see it, because it, the ordinance does state that it's the town council that does send it over, and it's the school committee that sends it over to the town, so, will the town council and the school committee be seeing these numbers anytime soon?
I would assume they could be seeing them very shortly.
Okay, and I did send a request that our joint meeting with the school department for December ninth be very detailed, and our, the outline of the February third, two thousand fourteen meeting, when we went over the school budget, and it was a very detailed three-year budget forecasting process, and gave a lot of detailed information, I was wondering, has any, are we gonna go use that same process?
I can't say that at this, at this time, I'm not sure, uh, there was a lot of just things going on this past week, with, I had going on vacation, so, but I do know that we.
I, but I did send, you know, I sent that, no, a while ago, okay, but I just wanna make sure, because it was very detailed, and I think, you know, after the last budget, I think the taxpayers, that's what they're expecting to see.
It would be very difficult to put together an extremely detailed budget for the December meeting, uh.
Well, we did it in the past.
In for the December meeting, for having the school, for example, just saying, the school, when it comes to attendance rates and things of that nature, and then total revenues, what I'm actually gonna receive from the state and reimbursements and things of that nature, I won't have exact figures, so, it would be almost detrimental to even go into extreme detail, when those numbers would be highly susceptible to change, so, that would just be my only concern, but I have no problem breaking it out in detail.
We can get it as detailed as possible for us, and if we have any other questions, we can ask.
And, um, also, going forward, I'm with the budget process, are we going to get, and thank you, by the way, for putting it on the, your website, on the treasurer's page, the P M M debt summary, I know it's a very lengthy document, forty-seven pages, but it includes the Moody's credit analysis, are we gonna have some sort of report on this, or can we attach that to our budget so everyone can see it, I mean, it's very detailed, it gives the debt summary?
To the entire budget binder, I don't know if it.
Can we at least reference it, and so folks do know that?
I'm sure that there's a point where you can reference it, and, um, of course, I can write up some comments, I'm sure I can find it in a place to, to.
But I think, you know, given the fact that it has the debt summary, and it gives a lot of information, it would probably be.
I'll look at it, see if there's a possibility to throw it into the binder, but as far as going forward on this, the, the presentation on where the numbers are derived from, so that we can explain the why we're paying what we're paying, or where revenues are coming from, absolutely.
Yeah, you do have some charts in there, and it, it does break it down, so it's really, it's nice.
I thought that would be very important information for a taxpayer to have, so that's why we put it up there.
Yes, thank you, and I, you know, I just happened to have an accident, so that's why, you know, I want the folks to know, it is on the treasurer's page on the town website, and also the, the debt affordability study, which was a hundred and thirty-five pages, it was a lengthy read also, that also, we could get, like, some sort of a summary, just so folks understand.
And you'd want that presented along with the budget itself?
Well, it would be, yeah, just so folks understand, or if we could have some sort of a summary, just at the beginning of our budget book, explaining what our debt, what our debts are.
Okay, see what I can, see what I, what kind of synopsis I can put together for, um, those high, um, highly scrutinized numbers, put something together for that.
Okay.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, anybody from council? Okay, John, thank you very much, thanks, John. Okay, my honor clerk, I don't want to take the job, so, B one, please.
Approval of National Grid slash Verizon poll location request, five thirty-five Twin Brook Lane.
Uh, this is, listen, are you prepared to just give a little presentation about this, or give it, just to mention it, I know we're gonna, we're gonna have this gentleman speak, which we normally don't do, but this is probably, I'd like to have him have a, a say on it, but you just wanna give a presentation of, or talk about what it's about in general?
Sure, um.
Nobody catch that, damn it?
No, not at all, um, this is a petition from National Grid to install, um, an electric slash telephone pole on, I think it's Twin Brook Lane, if I'm not mistaken, and until recently, this was something that was approved outside of the council, uh, by the Department of Public Works, uh, the council started, uh, doing this, I think, at the town managers and my recommendation, however, the Department of Public, I understand there's a problem with this application, uh, the Department of Public Works still deals with National Grid on a regular basis, and, uh, my suggestion is, since there is a problem that the gentleman's gonna speak about in a minute, regarding, I guess, the placement of the pole, I'm sure he can explain it better than I can, um, I think we should send it to the director of the Department of Public Works, and see if he can work something out with National Grid, that'll make, um, this gentleman happier, uh.
Yeah, because we wouldn't know about the paperwork we got, if there was any, friends on any paper, anybody's property, so, so if you wanna just come up and just give us a, you know, a little, your concern, and I'm gonna probably ask that we just table this.
Do I turn this on, or is Gary gonna throw Boston at that?
I'll keep you out of your control.
Yeah, um, my name is Leo Roy, and thank you, uh, council for having me.
Leo, turn your mic on, just gonna push your one up, you know.
Uh, National Grid, uh, when they, when they were surveying for the pole, uh, the guy said, uh, you might not be happy with this, he says, if they can't put a support pole on this side of the street, they're gonna want to put one on your property, and he said, you might have to go to a town meeting, so he already knew about this, and my wife got an email the other day, and said that it was on the agenda for tonight, so I figured I'd show up and voice my disapproval, uh, I don't know why they can't use, um, the old style, I don't know, they had to tear it buckled on, and they put a, a barrel in the ground, and anchor it, uh, maybe because of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar housing, the other one on his property, but I don't want the pole to go on my end either.
So it is gonna go on your property then, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, I, I think, you know, rather than us making any decisions, I think we need to look into it a little further, I mean, certainly, you know, a lot of public works director and town manager, you know, look into it and get a hold of National Grid, and, uh, so we don't make any decision on it this evening.
Cause I, I looked again, uh, today, and, like, if they were gonna put it any place on town property, they have to put it through asphalt, through, you know, they have to dig up the road and put it in, I don't think they're gonna do that.
It might require a survey to see, you know, how much of the property, we don't know, you know, those council members, where.
No, it's fine, I, I deal with that.
We'll, uh, we'll definitely look into it a little bit more.
Well, I just wanna show up, so it.
No, it's a smart thing to do, you're welcome to come any meeting and voice your concerns, and like I said, I want, we don't wanna do anything that's gonna be detrimental to, you know, your property, and you have rights too, so we wanna look into it a little more, so.
Thank you very much.
No problem, uh, I think we're just gonna, Chair, I don't think we need a motion, just to table it, am I correct, Mr. Roy?
Yes, correct.
All right, so I think what best is to probably table this, and have a town manager and public works, we have to look into it a little further.
Um, well, I, I would like to make a motion that it be tabled, but when it's turned over to Public Works, could we make sure that Mr. Roy is included in those talks?
Absolutely, we're making.
It's that property that's gonna be directly affected, you know, but, um, yeah, I make a motion that we table.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, officially table it, I think that would be right.
All right, so we have a motion, wait a second, now.
I'll second the motion.
Wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it, all in, all right, you'll be in the loop, and I'll let you know, uh, what's going on, okay, sir?
Okay, I'll probably just get your contact information, you know, and, uh.
And feel free, anytime, call town manager and get, but he'll be back next week, and he'll, he'll reach out to you, okay, thank you, sir, okay, item B two, please.
Approval of report and recommendation from tax collector Monique Hall in regards to a request to evade uncollectible taxes.
Good evening, Monique, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm sure you're thrilled about being here tonight?
I am.
Okay.
Um, basically, the report I gave you, it shows, uh, motor vehicle taxes for two thousand four, five, and six, that were originally set to Harash, Lyon, and Hammer, that they weren't able to collect, it. All right?
Yeah, that's funny, but.
Um, it's too old to send to M C A, we'll continue to collect it, but, um, collection agencies won't take anything over ten years old, so, we'll evade it, and if the people somehow come back to, um, re-register their car, we'll collect it at that point, other than that, the, um, newer ones are because the taxpayer is deceased, so there's really no way to get that one, and then we have tangible taxes, a little over thirteen thousand dollars for businesses that are, their licenses have been revoked, they're out of, they're out of business, um, they haven't been in business for a few years, we did send them to the collection agency, um, there's, there's no way to get, there's no way to get the money, they don't have any assets for us, they have nothing for us to attach.
Can't collect from a ghost.
You really can't.
And we've done this a few times, and.
Yeah, you really can't.
Yeah, all right, is there any questions from anybody from, I mean, I looked over, but obviously, like you said, if they're deceased, or the business is out of business, uh.
I mean, we tried to go after Pro V, but if there's nothing there, there's nothing there.
And you do have this, and if they do come back and decide to register a vehicle or whatever, then we can, they would still owe them back taxes regardless, there's no statute of limitations, as far as they've come back and, and.
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll give them.
Any questions, anybody from council?
Hey, Monique, this is, um, this is the implementation of a plan that the town ecology's been using for years, correct? Once they're ten years old or older, we abate them, and then, and then we keep the information if they'll come back, buy property in a town. if they'll come back, buy property and the town economy again will come back.
Yes.
For relief on car registration or anything.
We'll get it then.
Then we can reinstitute the claim against them and try to collect again.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Monique, on the letter that you sent to the council, it's, I just wanted to mention that you said that the total amount is $56,249.13.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure the public understands what the total amount is. And also it says it's outstanding from 2009 to 2019.
Right, the 2019, those are the deceased people.
Okay.
I just did, it was for motor vehicle 2009 to 19, and then 2004 to 2006.
So is the total amount on the pages that we have equal to 56,000 or is that just for a portion of it?
No, it's, it's everything together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. I guess we'll have to approve, I'll look for a motion to approve, I guess approve of this recommendation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I second the motion.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Monique.
Thank you, Monique.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is B one, uh, B three, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Approval of Calumtry Public Schools requesting approval of the RIDE letter of intent for stage one.
Okay, we've had, we put together a committee, I don't know if the super tenants care to just explain anything to taxpayers or how we move, are you willing to give a?
Thank you. Questions?
No, I mean, you know, it's, it's a lot of, I mean, I can just briefly say, we put together a building committee with taxpayers and building officials and we've had assessments done of all schools and this is part of a process that has to be done according to RIDE and one of the steps are is to put an initial letter in following along the RIDE standards and that's what this is tonight, just by no means obligates taxpayers to anything, it's just a letter on intent or a letter explaining to the state what we're going to do. So with that being said, are there any questions? Yes.
Hey Greg, I just have one question. I don't know if you have the paperwork that we have in front of us, I just want to make sure the dates are correct. I don't.
Give me the letters.
Yeah, the estimated timeline.
Oh, so that's in the last section.
Maybe it's on page 51 in the bottom.
Right, so that, that was the, so that's the proposal we put out in terms of the RFP for the auditor, I mean, for the auditor, for Studio J for the educational architect firm and we've already notified RIDE, there were two dates that we could go for, one was the September date, I think that's what that has.
Yeah, that's why.
But we've already sent to RIDE and they've approved that, that's why we have the January 15 date, the two.
Yeah, I really have that.
So we have, we have an email from RIDE, I can, I can give.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, in the letter intent.
Well, that's a good question, that.
I just wanted to make sure that that was valid, that's all.
Correct, correct, but part of that, the proposed scope of work, feasibility study, that's what we put out for the RFP, so that's what, you know, that's Studio J Phil Conti put that in, that's what RIDE wants. So we didn't alter that, but the dates have changed, we have till January 15th.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, that's all.
Thank you. And the building committee has had several meetings in the moving forward. I don't think we're. Correct, so we have a very, I think, as you know, we're very comprehensive, qualified building committee, we have several individuals on the committee who are residents, electors, and who are in the field, project managers for some, some of the largest companies in New England, so I feel, you know, to Pope Dr. Dixon and Mr. La Wassenier, part of that, I know Mr. Dagostino had sent a letter to Mr. Waziger saying that he was in support of this, it's, it meets all the requirements and the, we didn't make any changes, but what the building committee put forward to the school committee, I'm not a voting member, but Mr. Fadden though is, and Dr. Dixon is, you know, as well as Mr. La Wassen, there were no changes made, I think that was one of the concerns. I'm certainly glad to see that guys moved right along.
Yeah, and it just gets us into the, the process, there's no commitment whatsoever, so I, I appreciate that.
Understood. Is there any other questions to council members?
No.
Okay, if we have no questions, I guess the, so you entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the, the request for the approval of RIDE, the letter intent.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very big for explanation. Okay, Madam Clerk, C one, please.
Renewal of application by Kevin Beasy for private detective license.
Okay, we looked it over, does anybody have any questions from the council? This is a pretty standard thing we do, assigned by the chief, it's free throw, we'll look it over, records and so on, so if there's no questions from the council.
It's a renewal anyway.
It's a renewal, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, motion to approve license.
And a motion to approve, we have a second.
I second the motion.
And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak? I ask that you come up in a limited to three minutes and give your name and address for the record, please.
Bradford Mayor, 360 Oakhurst Road. While I do agree with the changes that are coming for the solid waste ordinance change, I just hope that the no questions request that came after the first reading of that was a precedent setting for a future ordinance change.
Any other questions from the audience? I wish all the meetings went this slow and this quick. Seeing none, the chair will take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Most carries, thank you very much for coming onto the meeting this evening.
Thank you very much.
Could you, I just, could I, Tom Manager, would you, actually, once you get the clerk, your, any of your information, contact information and manage.
Thank you.
Okay, Leo?
Here at the other end, he'd throw them at you.
Coming up on someplace that I just will read, I'm sure.
I just got that.
That's what I was saying.
Oh, no, one of you.
My cousin. Came back Saturday night. Eighty-seven.
Yeah, my father said the coal streak was coming in, it was going to go down about 75.
Right on the wall.
He's on the west coast.
Save your steps to get to the tree stand. I ain't, I got a tree stand, I ain't doing that. So even get me going.
Hi.
I looked through my contact information.
Okay.
Leo Roy.
R O Y?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm at 550 Twin Brook Lane.
Five fifty-five?
Five fifty.
Five fifty. And what was it?
Twin Brook.
Twin.
Brooklyn.
Brook.
And my phone is 397-3197.
397 and?
3197.
3197. 397, 3197.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.